All electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate. Madam Majority Leader.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of April 10, 2025. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias, and I'd like to thank you for joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body, I welcome the members of the public who have joined us here today. During stated meetings, only members of the council may speak. Members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support of any remarks, you may make the silent approval gesture. I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Caban. Carr.
Here.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Felice.
Here.
Gennaro.
I'm back.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif. Hanks. Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishna. Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mar Morado.
Present.
Thank you. Marte.
Present.
Mealy.
Present.
Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse. Jose.
Present.
Palladino.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Wrestler. Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Man.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Vernikoff. Williams.
I'm here.
One.
Present.
Juang.
Here.
Ariola.
Here.
Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Present.
Which is located at 141-24 Joel Avenue in Queens.
Honorable members of the council, distinguished guests, and beloved members of our community, thank you for the opportunity to offer this invocation during this sacred season of Passover. In the Jewish tradition, Passover is a time when we remember the journey from slavery to freedom, a story not only of the past, but a timeless call to action. As we read in the Haggadah each year, and I quote, "In every generation, we are obligated to see ourselves as if we personally came out of Egypt." This is not just a historical memory, it is a moral challenge. It reminds us to stand with the oppressed, to lift those who are burdened, and to ensure that freedom is not just a story we tell, but a reality we build together. The Talmud teaches us that every human being is created "bezelem elokim" in the image of God. May that sacred truth guide us to treat every person with dignity and every voice with respect. As you sit here to make decisions that shape lives, may you be granted wisdom to see what is right, strength to see what is just, and compassion to hear what is not always said. Grant our leaders the clarity to see beyond division and courage, to act with integrity and humility to serve with compassion. May they be ever mindful that each policy affects real lives, families, children, elders, and neighbors, and that true leadership is measured not by power but by service. Let this council be a place where diverse perspectives come together, not in conflict but in collaboration, not for personal gain but for the benefit of all who call this city home. May peace dwell in our gates, justice in our streets, and hope in every heart, and let us all say amen.
Thank you. I would now ask Councilmember Jim Gennaro to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Madam Leader. Thank you, Rabbi Walkin, for giving today's invocation. Rabbi Walkin is a pillar of the Orthodox community in my district. Rabbi Walkin is a highly dedicated and motivated speaker and outreach professional with more than 30 years of experience running and directing impactful programs for adults and teens of all ages. He currently serves as Director of Hazak's J-Wave Teen, Young Adult Division, where he continues to inspire and guide the next generation. Rabbi Walkin and his wife, Robinson Ahuva, are the proud parents of five wonderful children. Once again, Majority Leader, I thank Rabbi Walkin for being here today, and I make a motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record.
Thank you. We will also ask Councilmember Chris Banks for the adoption of minutes.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of March 26, 2025 be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
Preconsidered M119, elections commissioner appointment.
Rules, privileges, and elections.
Petitions and communication?
None.
Land use call-ups?
None.
Thank you. We will now have communication.
I want to begin by acknowledging the fatal fire that took place in Councilmember Mealy's district on Tuesday, which resulted in the death of one person. My heart goes out to their family and loved ones during this tragic time. I also want to acknowledge the horrible tragedy out of the Dominican Republic that killed over 200 people when a roof collapsed during a concert at Jet Set nightclub in Santo Domingo. New York City is home to the largest Dominican community, and we extend our deepest condolences to them during this difficult time. Last week, the council released its official response to the mayor's fiscal year 2026 preliminary budget. Our council has been consistent in championing a budget that invests in New Yorkers. During last year's budget process, we worked alongside residents across the city to fight hard to restore full library service, protect childcare and educational programs, along with other critical services New Yorkers rely on. We also secured major housing investments at a pivotal time when our city faces a daunting housing crisis that demands greater resources and actions to address. There is far more at stake this year with a destructive force in the White House that is attacking working families in our city and throughout the country. The council's preliminary budget response lays out a balanced, responsible, and forward-thinking path for our city and New Yorkers to achieve stability. Our investments are focused in several areas that respond to some of our city's most significant challenges: NICA and affordable housing, 3K and other early childhood programs, our public schools, CUNY, mental health solutions, programs that reduce recidivism, our parks, cultural institutions, libraries, and other vital services for New Yorkers. When we meaningfully invest in our communities and prepare the city for the chaos coming from Washington, we can create a future where we all thrive and no one is left behind. Our goal as a government is to serve the public and improve the quality of life for the people we serve and represent. Donald Trump's never-ending stream of chaos, which includes the recent gutting of the Department of Health and Human Services and its head start and childcare offices, runs totally counter to that purpose. The Trump administration also managed to do the unthinkable, slashing funding to the World Trade Center Health Program that provides care to tens of thousands of first responders and survivors of the health impacts from 9/11. Trump's cuts dishonor the thousands of New Yorkers we lost on 9/11, our brave heroes and survivors. They continue to suffer from debilitating health impacts, and they deserve our government's support. Though there are reports that some firings and cuts were reversed, others have not been. None of this was necessary. In just three short months, Trump has managed to make life more difficult, dangerous, and expensive for working families. His allegiances are clear: they are not to working people, but all to himself. Just yesterday, we held a press conference outside the Trump Building on Wall Street to raise alarms about the disastrous impacts of Trump's tariffs. While the mayor failed to stand up for our city and New Yorkers, this council made our voices heard. These tariffs would constitute the largest tax hike in over 50 years, hiking the prices of common goods and harming small businesses, working families, and everyday New Yorkers and Americans. Our economy was on a steady course to recovery, but this tariff plan has threatened our trajectory and unnecessarily hurt our economy. While the president paused many tariffs for 90 days, the administration must stop sabotaging our city and national economy. As the council laid out in our preliminary budget response last week, there is already some risk from naturally occurring economic uncertainty, but the most significant risk to our economy is now the unnecessary volatility caused by the Trump administration's actions. The council's budget response identified $1.9 billion to preserve for new needs and budgetary risks, including the direct attacks by Trump on our city's budget. But let me be clear: our city and other local and state governments across the country can only do so much to blunt the most devastating consequences of Trump-inflicted damage to our economy. And this is on top of Trump and his allies coming after Americans' health care, food assistance, jobs, housing, and retirement funds while raising prices on essential goods. Trump's allies in the New York congressional delegation have an obligation to put the people of New York first. New Yorkers certainly deserve better. April is National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, during which we raise awareness and advance public education about the prevalence of sexual assault across the country. As a city, we must continue to empower survivors and support them with necessary resources and pathways to recover while working to prevent sexual assault. It is also Autism Acceptance Month, which celebrates and uplifts the voices of people with autism. New York will always be a city that supports the well-being of people of all abilities and spectrums of neurodiversity. We're also celebrating Arab-American Heritage Month. Join us in uplifting the many contributions of our Arab-Americans across all communities throughout this month and beyond. Friday is the Start to Black Maternal Health Week, a time when we recognize the stark inequities in maternal health outcomes that disproportionately affect Black women and birthing people. In addition to convening a maternal health steering committee, our Women Majority Council has been consistent in championing accessible maternal health care through our investments in mental health and doula care, as well as the Guaranteed Income Pilot we launched last year. There is still much more work to be done to secure the health and stability our mothers and their children need. This week is also National Library Week, a time to celebrate these pillars of our neighborhoods. Libraries are information hubs that New Yorkers of all ages rely on for knowledge, resources, and connection. For all that our libraries provide us, they deserve full funding in our city budget. April 13 is Vaisaki, one of the most significant days for the Sikh community and a day where many Sikhs chose to be baptized. I hope all who observed had a wonderful day of reflection and celebration. And happy early birthday to Councilmember Crystal Hudson, who is celebrating on the 14th. And Councilmember Julie Wan, whose birthday is on the 17th. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following finance items. Pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, establishing a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for one lot in Councilmember Rita Joseph's district. Pre-considered resolution, also sponsored by Councilmember Brannon, establishing a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for one lot in Councilmember Althea Stevens' district. Next, we'll vote on the following appointments. Resolution 820, sponsored by Councilmember Keith Powers, would approve the appointment by the council of Lauren Stossel as a member of the New York City Board of Corrections. Resolution 821, also sponsored by Councilmember Powers, would designate Patricia Marthon for appointment by the mayor as a director of the New York City Health and Hospitals Corporation. An appointment by public advocate Jomani Williams of Leah S. Goodrich as a member of the New York City Planning Commission. And a pre-considered resolution approving Mark Landis to the Office of Commissioner of Elections of the Board of Elections. Today, we'll also vote on the following pieces of resolutions. Resolution 333A, sponsored by public advocate Jomani Williams, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S-28A-A106, which would eliminate the subminimum wage for employees based on their disability or age. We thank our staff member Elizabeth Arts. Resolution 59A, sponsored by Majority Whip Silvina Brooks Powers, would call on the MTA to conduct a comprehensive environmental impact study on the viability of the proposed QueensLink project. Resolution 187, sponsored by Councilmember Kevin Riley, would call on the MTA to conduct a comprehensive environmental impact statement for the proposed Gun Hill Road Electric Bus Depot charging facility. We thank our staff member John Basile. Resolution 729, for which I am the lead sponsor, would condemn President Trump's targeting of diversity, equity, and inclusion, or DEI, programs and policies at the federal level, and express support for such programs and policies at the city and state level. Putting an end to DEI programs and policies at the federal level can negatively impact everyone by undermining diversity that benefits us all while blocking opportunities for those historically denied them. Our diversity is one of our greatest strengths. The systemic attack on diversity by Trump and his allies are trying to turn back the clock on progress in our country. They want to take away opportunity from those without their inherited wealth and privilege. In fact, it's clear from their actions that they want to return this country to the status quo before the civil rights movement of the 1950s and 1960s. They are dismantling DEI and using it as an excuse to attack programs and opportunities for all working families. It is morally reprehensible, and no one should be fooled by this scam. They're trying to take away funding for our children's education and the services that all American families need. It is imperative that our city stands up for New Yorkers and our city's values. We cannot allow this fraud to divide us when the attack is on all of us. Anti-discrimination protections help us build towards the just and equitable future that we all deserve. We thank our staff member William Diure. Next, we'll vote on Resolution 836 that I'm sponsoring to authorize my ability as speaker to commence legal action on behalf of the council to defend against the Adams administration's violation of local law in collusion with the Trump administration and attacks by the Trump administration against the city of New York. The chaos created by the Trump administration taking money away from the city's bank accounts, violating constitutional rights, and advancing its extreme deportation agenda has negatively impacted our great city. Fear has permeated communities, undermining the safety of our neighborhoods and small businesses. Trump has shown a willingness to engage in full-on assaults of our city's residents, our budget, independence, and our values. This mayor has been compromised into being complicit. His administration's latest executive order inviting ICE onto Rikers Island is the latest example. This will make New York City less safe, with New Yorkers fearful of seeking help from our police department. And let's be clear: this is about the mayor fulfilling his end of the bargain to Trump, selling out New Yorkers in exchange for the dismissal of his federal corruption case, as stated by Judge Ho, quote, "Everything here smacks of a bargain: dismissal of the indictment in exchange for immigration policy concessions," end quote. This is the result of promises made becoming promises kept, and the mayor putting his personal interests and Trump's extreme agenda above our cities and New Yorkers. It is the council's responsibility to stand up for New Yorkers, and we intend to continue doing so. We thank our staff member Maka EJB. Today, we'll also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Introduction 671A, sponsored by Councilmember Carmen De La Rosa, would authorize the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, or DCAS, to waive the civil service examination fee for high school students in New York City and for individuals who are first-time applicants. We thank our staff member Rie Ogasawa. Next, we will be voting on a pair of bills to streamline tree maintenance. Introduction 800A, sponsored by Councilmember Natasha Williams, would require the Department of Parks and Recreation to develop criteria by which they prioritize tree maintenance. The Parks Department would also be required to post a description of the criteria used to prioritize tree maintenance on its website. Thank you to our staff members Chris Satori, Patrick Mulvihill, and Nick Wodzowski. And Introduction 978A, also sponsored by Councilmember Williams, would require the 311 Customer Service Center in coordination with the Parks Department to provide 311 customers who submit tree pruning-related requests with certain information, including links to relevant maps and information about a program to train and certify volunteers in tree pruning. Thank you to our staff members Irene Byhovsky and Eric Brown. We'll also vote on several bills that will strengthen transparency and oversight of the NYPD's use of technology. Introduction 168A, sponsored by Majority Leader Amanda Farias, would require that the NYPD, upon request, provide the Department of Investigation with an itemized list of all surveillance technologies currently used by the department, and to provide information on all data access and retention policies for data collected by such technologies. The legislation also requires the NYPD to provide DOI with semi-annual updates on all newly acquired or discontinued surveillance technologies. Introduction 233A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would require the NYPD to publish on its website a written policy that establishes procedures and regulations for the department's use of facial recognition technologies. The legislation would also require the NYPD to conduct annual audits of the department's use of facial recognition technology, share their findings with the Department of Investigation, and post them on the department's website. And Introduction 480A, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Wan, would update language in the existing Public Oversight of Surveillance Technology, or the POST Act, to require the NYPD to publish impact and use policies for each individual surveillance technology it uses, and make clear which entities use the data gathered from their technologies, how the data is protected, and the potential impacts of these surveillance technologies. We thank our staff members Josh Kingsley, Jeremy Whitman, and Rob Calandra. Next, we'll vote on a package of legislation that stems from my 2024 State of the City. The first five-year Streets Master Plan was due in December 2021. Since then, the city has consistently fallen short on its milestones, including the miles of protected bus lanes and bike lanes required to be built each year. The council has consistently pressed DOT to provide updates to their progress, but they have been unwilling to do so. Today's legislation will advance greater transparency on the status of projects that contribute to the Streets Master Plan to promote accountability. Next, Introduction 1114A, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Wan, would require DOT to maintain a capital tracker for its projects, updated three times a year with more granular data about each of its projects. This tracker will provide greater transparency into DOT's capital planning process than is currently provided by the citywide capital projects dashboard. We thank our staff members Jessica Foo and Mark Chen. And Introduction 1105, sponsored by Majority Whip Silvina Brooks Powers, would require DOT to provide a roadmap of all projects planned for that year that will contribute to the requirements of the Streets Master Plan. The department would be required to provide updates three times a year. Additionally, DOT would be required to provide monthly updates on the progress of projects during their construction phase. We thank our staff member Mark Chen. Introduction 807A, also sponsored by Majority Whip Brooks Powers, would require the New York City Emergency Management to disseminate localized emergency preparedness materials in locations that are prone to flash floods. This aims to increase public awareness on flash flood risks, to boost registration for the emergency notification system. Additionally, NISAM would be required to develop guidance for facilitating safe evacuations before flash flood emergencies. We thank our staff members Rachel Cordero, Josh Kingsley, and William Honggak. And finally, Introduction 694A, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would create a permanent, long-term strategic planning process for establishing and maintaining a citywide public bathroom network. The relevant agencies would be required to produce a strategic planning report to be updated every four years with the goal of providing at least 2,120 public bathrooms by the year 2035, at least half of which would be publicly owned. It would also require the agencies to post a comprehensive online map of all public bathrooms in the city. We thank our staff members Jayosari Ganapathy, Erica Cohen, and Rachel Cordero. Thank you very much for your attention, colleagues. Now, I turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders. I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Hudson, followed by Wan, then Nurse, and Williams.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. Today, this body is voting on Intro 233 as part of a package of bills introduced to strengthen the POST Act and enhance transparency surrounding the NYPD's use of surveillance technology during investigations. The use of facial recognition technology is growing rapidly in police departments across the country. Given that the NYPD is the highest-funded police force in the nation, it's no surprise that New York City is among the leading users of facial recognition as a surveillance tool. However, the use of this technology in policing raises serious concerns from wrongful arrests due to inaccuracies in the software to the broader normalization of increased surveillance and the erosion of privacy rights. These harms are not felt equally. They disproportionately impact the communities most affected by overpolicing, particularly Black and Brown men. As technologies evolve, government has an obligation to ensure they don't step on our civil liberties. Intro 233 requires the NYPD to develop and publish a clear policy outlining the department's procedures and regulations for the use of facial recognition technology. This policy must then be published on the department's website, making it easily accessible for all New Yorkers to understand their right to safeguard their privacy and better understand how the NYPD is using surveillance technology. Additionally, Intro 233 promotes greater transparency by requiring the NYPD to conduct regular audits of its use of facial recognition technology. This bill is about increasing transparency, holding the NYPD accountable, and protecting the privacy and civil liberties of all New Yorkers. I urge everyone to pass Intro 233 and the bills introduced by my colleagues, Councilmember Wan and Majority Leader Farias, to protect our constituents from departmental overreach and to ensure transparency, accountability, and the protection of privacy rights for all New Yorkers. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Wan, followed by Nurse, then Williams.
Colleagues, I urge you to vote in favor of Intro 480, part of a critical package of bills that builds on the original public oversight of Surveillance Technology, or POST Act, to ensure that the NYPD's surveillance practices are transparent and accountable to the public. Intro 480 closes key caps in the original POST Act by requiring NYPD to publish clear, separate impact and use policies for each surveillance technology the agency uses. These policies will now include essential details about how each tool functions, who has access to the data, and what safety risks or civil rights impacts may exist. Intro 480 also ensures how NYPD tracks how and when surveillance data is shared externally with other government agencies on the local, state, and federal level. In a time like now, where Ranjani Srinivasan, Mohamed Khalil, and Yeon Se Cheong, these are all students that were surveilled and detained, even though they were on student visas or were green card permanent residents, this is a time where we must have transparency into how surveillance technology is being used by our government and what data tracking ourselves are being shared with what different levels of government, such as ICE and Homeland Security. Intro 480 is just one part of the solution. In this bill package, Intro 168 from Majority Leader Farias gives the other department more oversight, as well as Intro 233 from Councilmember Hudson. So together, this package creates additional oversight on surveillance technologies used by NYPD to ensure transparency and public accountability. We work closely with the NYPD and the advocates to arrive at the right language that we were comfortable with to achieve these goals. I want to give a special shout-out to my brother David Siffert from Stop Spying and Ivy Dyson from the Brennan Center, who worked tirelessly with our office to help this Intro 480 to get to this point. Let's pass Intro 480 and its companion bills and make meaningful steps towards a modern and responsible surveillance oversight in New York City. Additionally, I would like to highlight 1114, which is a DOT bill that we also should push to have transparency in our capital projects. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Nurse, followed by Williams, then Majority Whip Brooks Powers.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, we are voting to make New York City flush with public toilets. We are not just flushing Queens anymore, we are flushing everywhere. This bipartisan bathroom bill will create the first citywide public bathroom the first citywide public bathroom network. By 2035, we'll have a network of over 2,100 public toilets, more than doubling what we have now. Every single person walking around New York City should be free to pee in a private, clean, and functioning bathroom. No one should have to experience the humiliation or stress of having to relieve themselves out on the street. New York City has 8.8 million residents, but just over 1,000 public bathrooms. That is one toilet for every 7,000 people, and I believe we can do better. The consequences of the failure to plan for more public toilets are thousands of predominantly Black and Brown New Yorkers getting criminal and civil summonses, tickets, and fines simply for having a bladder. Thirty-four years ago, four homeless men filed a lawsuit against the city demanding safe and better access to public toilets. Since then, our city has grown, our budget has grown, but somehow, we have not managed to address this issue. Through Intro 694, for the first time, our city agencies will not only have to actually come up with a plan to maintain and expand a citywide public bathroom network, but they'll have to plan every four years. Right now, we don't have a plan. We don't have a strategy. We have a hodgepodge of agency-specific processes that create a disjointed, stunted, and some might say foul approach. This bill was developed out of the Free to Pee Coalition. The original foreman who sued the city inspired a diverse coalition of menstruators, pregnant people, parents, caregivers, homeless people, older people, and workers who came together to demand our city plan for this basic human need. I thank you for all the colleagues who have supported, and I encourage you all to vote yes today. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Recognizing Councilmember Williams, followed by Majority Whip Brooks-Powers and Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you so much. Today, I'm proud to sponsor two bills that are rooted in transparency, access, and accountability, because that's what New Yorkers deserve from their government. Intro 800, Intro 978, two bills that are about something pretty simple, making it easier for New Yorkers to understand how their government works and making sure residents aren't left in the dark. For so many of us, when we think about trees in our neighborhoods, we think about beauty, about shade, about air quality. But I'll be honest, most of the calls I get about trees come when something goes wrong, when a limb falls, when a tree looks like it's about to tip over, when folks call 3-1-1, and they wait, and they wait, and they wonder what happens next. Today, Intro 800, we are saying residents deserve to know how tree maintenance decisions are made, what's the process, and what gets prioritized. Intro 978, we're saying when a neighbor calls 3-1-1 about a tree concern, they shouldn't just get a case number. They should get resources. They should get clarity, and they should get connected, because that's what bills trust. And that's what government looks like, especially good government. I want to thank my colleagues in the council, the speaker, all the residents who have raised these concerns for years. And lastly, I want to thank and acknowledge my sorority of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, who have joined us for the third annual Delta Day at City Hall. Thank you so much, Majority Leader, for your grace.
Recognizing Majority Whip Brooks-Powers, followed by Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you. Today, I am proud to stand before you as, excuse me, the council votes on a package of bills that reflects our shared commitment to transparency, public safety, and transit equity. My bill, Intro 1105, responds to DOT's consistent delays in meeting its legally required benchmarks under the Streets' Master Plan. Last year, DOT reached less than half of the bus lane mileage required by law. This bill will require the agency to publish more frequent and detailed updates on timelines, budgets, and community board engagement. And together with Intro 1114, sponsored by Councilmember One, create a centralized online tracker so the public and the council can hold DOT accountable. Intro 807 addresses the increasingly urgent risk of flash flooding in communities like Southeast Queens. This legislation requires New York City Emergency Management to identify suitable shelter locations in flood-prone areas and proactively inform residents through outreach, mailers, and in-person visits, so they know where to go and what to do before the next storm hits. Finally, Resolution 59 calls for a full environmental impact study of the Queens Link proposal, which would reactivate the long, the long-abandoned Rockaway Beach branch. It's an opportunity to further study the potential impacts of this project on transit equity in our city. I want to thank my colleagues for their support. This work is about building a safer, fairer city for every New Yorker in every borough. I urge my colleagues to vote yes on these critical pieces of legislation. In echoing Councilmember Williams, I welcome my sorority to the People's House, and that is the women of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you. I want to thank Speaker Adams and colleagues for your support and attention to this important piece of legislation, Intro 671, which we will be voting on shortly. As Chair of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor, we have been tracking and sounding the alarm on the high vacancy rates across our city agencies. Despite the council's best efforts to fight against mayoral pegs and cuts, a 5% vacancy rate average across the board remains today, translating to over 15,000 empty desks, unanswered phone calls, and the redistribution of responsibilities to an already overworked and burned-out municipal workforce. The civil service exam is required for 80% of the city's government position. It is unthinkable that as we try so hard to staff our agencies and hire to fill the gaps in our city workforce, there remains financial barriers that can make hiring unfeasible and inequitable. Fees for exams can range from $40 to $101, and that's just the cost of an entry exam. Exam takers can expect to incur hidden costs, such as studying materials, transportation, to and from interviews, and exams, and more. Inaccessible fees should not deter high school students or new applicants from seeking civil service careers. That's why the council is looking to pass Intro 671, which will require DCAST to waive the civil service examination fee for individuals who are enrolled at any public, private, or charter high schools in New York City or who are first-time applicants for civil service. Intro 671 says to New Yorkers, "We want you to work for New York City, and we are optimistic about the positive outcomes of a fairer application process for the future of civil servants who are urgently needed in our city." I urge you to vote in favor of this legislation at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, the last thing I'll ask for, colleagues, is to also vote yes on Intro 168, my companion bill, to Councilmembers One and Hudson on the POST Act. Report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor, Intro 671A, civil service exam fee waivers.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, preconsidered LU 271 and Reso 845, and preconsidered LU 272 and Reso 846, tax exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Fire and Emergency Management, Intro 807A, flash flood preparedness.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Governmental Operations, state and federal legislation, Intro 694A, citywide bathroom strategy.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 244 through 246, Brownsville NCP.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197 of the New York City Charter.
Report of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, Intro 800A, tree maintenance.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Public Safety, Intros 168A, 233A, and 480A, surveillance technology.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, Reso 820, recommending the appointment of Lawrence Dossel, Board of Corrections.
Coupled on general orders.
Resolution 821, recommending, recommending the designation for appointment of Dr. Patricia Marthone, Health and Hospitals Corporation.
Coupled on general orders.
M117 and Reso 847, approving the appointment of Leah Goodrich, Planning Commission.
Coupled on general orders.
Preconsidered M119 and Reso 848, recommending the appointment of Mark Landis, Board of Elections.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Technology, Intro 8, Intro 978A, tree pruning.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Intro 1105A, Streets' Master Plan.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1114A, Capital Project Tracker.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar, Resolution Appointing Various Persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders, I now ask that the Clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled today on today's General Orders Calendar.
Narcisse.
I vote aye on all.
Salam.
I vote aye on all.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Abreu.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brannan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks-Powers.
Aye.
Caban.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Carr.
No on Introduction 480A, M117, and accompanying Resolution 847 and Resolution 820, and aye on the rest. Thank you.
De La Rosa.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Dinowitz.
Aye.
Felice.
Aye on all.
Gennaro.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of Intro 480A and M117 with accompanying Resolution 847, on which I vote no.
Thank you. Gutierrez.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanks. Okay, we'll come back. Holden.
Aye on all, except for Intros 480A, Reso 820, and M117 with accompanying Reso 847, of which I vote no.
Hudson.
Aye on all.
Joseph.
Aye on all.
Krishnan.
Aye on all.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye on all.
Mamorato.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of Intro 480A, Reso 820, M117, with accompanying Reso 847. I vote no.
Marte.
Aye on all.
Meili.
Aye on all.
Menon.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll come back.
I vote aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Moya.
Thank you.
Nurse.
Can I get 30 seconds? I just wanted to thank the people who worked hard on my bill, Ryan Hickey from my team, and the bill drafters, Jessica Boulay and Jayar Sri Ganapathy, my comms director Patricia Santana, and all of the organizers in our coalition. I also just wanted to thank Councilmember Rita Joseph, who also advanced public bathroom legislation that this bill builds on. So, thank you. I vote aye.
Thank you. Osay.
I vote aye on all.
Palladino.
I vote aye on all, except for Intro 480A, Reso 820, M0117, with accompanying Reso 847, in which I vote no.
Thank you. Powers. Wrestler.
Aye.
Thank you. Riley.
Aye at all.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye on all, and also, everyone, it is child abuse prevention month, so please make sure we continue to love on our children.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Vernikov.
I vote aye on all, except no on Intro 480A, Reso 820, M0117, and accompanying Resolution 847. Thank you.
Williams.
I vote aye on all.
One.
Aye.
Zhuang.
Aye on all, except M117 abstained.
Areola.
I vote no on Intro 480A, Reso 820, M0117, with accompanying Reso 847, and aye on all the rest.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
Aye on all.
All items on today's General Order calendar are adopted by a vote of 47 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of Introduction 480-A, which was adopted by a vote of 40 in the affirmative, seven in the negative, and zero abstentions, and Resolution 820, which was adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, six in the negative, and zero abstentions, and M117 and Resolution 847, which was adopted by a vote of 39 in the affirmative, seven in the negative, and one abstention. Introduction and reading of bills. All bills have been referred to committee as indicated on today's agenda. Thank you. We will now move into the discussion of resolution, and I'd first like to recognize Minority Leader Areola, followed by Councilmember Riley, then Vernikov.
Thank you. There was a time when the term sanctuary city was not so controversial. We all know how, when, and why it started. But at some point, as irrational fears over mass deportation hit a fever pitch around a decade ago under the Obama administration, a common sense policy to protect victims of crime somehow turned into laws passed now on how to protect people who commit them. In 2014, a law was passed barring federal immigration and Customs Enforcement from keeping offices at Rikers. Because of that law, who knows how many people wanted for murder, rape, drug, and sex trafficking, people on the terrorist watch lists or who were known members of transnational criminal gangs who committed crimes and entered this country illegally have continued to commit crimes while they remain here and have been able to remain free in our city. How does allowing criminals to roam free keep us safe? Who exactly are we protecting by not cooperating with federal law enforcement agencies? Our immigrant neighbors came to this country to find a better life. They work hard, and they deserve to be protected. Allowing ICE to once again be present at Rikers even under the limited conditions outlined in the executive order will help us do that. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. I'll now recognize Councilmember Riley, followed by Vernikov, then Aviles.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and I'll be really quick. Today, I urge my colleagues to support Rezo 187, which calls on MTA to conduct a comprehensive environmental impact study on the proposed Electric Bus Depot Charging Facility on Gun Hill Road in my district. A comprehensive environmental impact statement will provide necessary insights into how this facility will affect our environment, health, and daily lives in District 12. It's crucial that we take the time to analyze these impacts before moving forward, and this is about protecting our community's well-being and ensuring that projects work for us and not against us, and I just urge all my colleagues to support this resolution. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Vernikov, followed by Aviles, then Caban.
Thank you. Today, we voted on Resolution 837, which will empower the Speaker to sue on behalf of the City Council for any alleged challenges on the mayor's part to our sanctuary city status. I, along with my colleagues, are vehemently against any resolution that would not work to curb the disastrous consequences that sanctuary city status has brought upon our city. I'd also like to note that at no point have the people of the city been afforded the opportunity to vote on sanctuary city policies, despite the fact that the people are the ones most affected by it. Instead, they've been subjected to mandates and tone deaf laws handed down by this body. It's disheartening that this body is happy to tax and regulate the taxpaying citizens of this city out of their homes to make room for illegal newcomers who should not even be here in the first place. The real humanitarian crisis is the one we're placing on New Yorkers. For this body to have the ability to sue to stop any attempt to fix this self-created problem is a slap in the face to every single constituent we represent. I cannot and will not support it. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Aviles, followed by Caban.
Today, our immigrant communities are under attack, not just by a federal administration trying to force an unconstitutional and violent mass deportation agenda on us from above. No, our sanctuary city status is under attack once again by our mayor, who thinks of himself as above the legal system, above democracy, and above protecting the safety of working-class New Yorkers. Mayor Adams is attempting to enact an executive order to use the city's resources to establish ICE operations on Rikers Island, flouting a decade of precedent and violating our sanctuary city protections. Sending the first deputy mayor to do his bidding keeps the mayor squarely in the quid pro quo area. It is clear that this mayor is bowing down to the Trump administration to keep his end of his deplorable deal to trade immigrant New Yorkers to save his own hide. We, as the council and representatives of the people of New York, not the wealthiest wannabe dictators of this country, have a responsibility to stand up against this destructive executive order, and I am proudly voting in favor of Resolution 836.
Recognizing Councilmember Caban.
Thank you. I also want to speak on the, the resolution regarding sanctuary cities and just debunk some of the rhetoric that we are hearing widespread with some facts. The reality is, is that sanctuary cities are safer for everyone. Sanctuary policies allow immigrants to report abuses and engage with public safety officials without fear of deportation. Sanctuary city policies allow immigrants to feel more comfortable acting as witnesses in criminal investigations, and on average, fewer crimes are committed per capita in counties with sanctuary policies compared to cities who do not have sanctuary city policies. Also, as a seven-plus-year public defender, I can tell you that when an undocumented immigrant or somebody that does not have a permanent legal residence here is convicted, found guilty of what they are accused of, they automatically enter a deportation proceeding process. And so, this, this, the rhetoric that's being told otherwise is just patently false. So, I'm hoping that we all stand, stand in truth and data and reality when we vote on items like this and support the sanctuary city policies that continue to make us a safer city. Thank you.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution 59A calls on the Metropolitan Transportation Authority to conduct a comprehensive environmental impact study on the viability of the proposed Queens Link project. All in, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 187 calls on the Metropolitan Transportation Authority to conduct a comprehensive environmental impact statement for the proposed Gun Hill Road Electric Bus Depot Charging Facility. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes, and any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 333A calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the New York State Governor to sign Senate Bill 28A and Assembly Bill 1006, which would eliminate the subminimum wage for employees based on their disability or age. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 729 condemns President Trump's revocation of diversity, equity, and inclusion programs and policies at the federal level and expresses support for such programs and policies at the city and state level. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Pre-considered Resolution 836 authorizes the Speaker to take legal action on behalf of the Council of the City of New York to defend against the Adams Administration's violation of sanctuary city laws and the Trump Administration's attacks on the City of New York. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion. I would now like to recognize Councilmember Banks, followed by Zhuang, then Brewer.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and today I'm introducing two important bills that address critical issues impacting tenants and consumers in our city. These measures aim to improve transparency and fairness in housing stability and tax preparation. Intro 1232 requires Human Resources Administration to send automated notifications to both tenants and property owners who, when rental assistance applications are approved, tenants will be informed about the amount, issuance date, and delivery method of their grant. While property owners will receive timely information to process payments efficiently, this bill ensures that tenants are kept informed and helps maintain housing stability by reducing delays and confusion. Intro 1231 requires tax preparers to provide itemized statements of all charges, including state and federal returns, software filing fees, and refund anticipation loans and checks. These statements will be available in both physical and electronic formats, promoting transparency for consumers. This bill protects consumers from hitting fees and ensures tax preparers have clear billing practices to avoid misunderstandings. Both bills are designed to empower New Yorkers by ensuring that they have information they need to navigate complex systems. These measures promote fairness, transparency, and accountability in housing and tax services. I urge my colleagues to support these important bills, which will help make our city more just, equitable, and responsive to the needs of all residents and consumers. And also, I want to thank those councilmembers who signed on. Councilmember Felice, Menon, Lewis, Brooks Powers, and Councilman Narcisse. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Recognizing Councilmember Zhuang, followed by Brewer, then Aviles.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm here to talk about American history, which was missing in most of textbooks and the society, related to my Rezo 844. Many workers who built the Transcontinental Railroad are Chinese, but you will not see any Chinese railroad workers in the group photo making the completion of the railroad in 1869. However, one hundred years later, nearly two thousand pounds of bones from Chinese workers were found from the desert of Central Pacific Railroad sections. Under each railroad sleeper, there are the skeleton of Chinese railroad workers, right here in our city. In 1876, Chinese railroad workers arrived to Brooklyn to work on the Long Island Railroad. Leland Stanford made a lot of money from Central Pacific Railroad, which was built by Chinese workers. He used the wealth to co-found Stanford University. After, however, after less than twenty years later, he endorsed the Chinese Exclusion Act. It was the first major U.S. law to restrict immigration based on national origin and race. The first federal, federal law prohibited all immigrants of Chinese labors and denying Chinese and other Asian residents already in the U.S. become citizens. We cannot erase the contribution of immigrants who gave everything to our country. Let's remember the history, not repeat the history today. Chinese-American history need to be cherished and respected. I'm grateful to be here to share the forgotten history of America and make May 10's Chinese-American Railroad Workers Memorial Day. I want to thank my colleague Bob Holden to give me his resolution, and I thank all my colleagues who co-sponsored this resolution, and please support Resolution 844. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Brewer, followed by Aviles, then Joseph.
Thank you very much. I'm calling to your attention Intro 1235 with Councilmember Gutierrez. It would require all city agencies to use a new and improved database for the Freedom of Information Law requests and better track response times in an effort to speed up the sharing of public information. It is true, Doris, which is the municipal library basically, does have such a database, but very few agencies, all agencies have used it, and at least nine do not. You should know, for example, that the Department of Corrections closes requests for government documents after an average of four hundred and eighty-five days, and the mayor's office is two hundred and eighty-three days to respond. That is not acceptable. And I want to say there's a new report, thank you, Reinvent Albany, New York City Government flouting Freedom of Information Law, and it talks about requesting records from the New York City agencies are skyrocketing, one hundred and seventy thousand requests last year. When I passed Open Records, that was some years ago, the portal was supposed to answer some of these questions. I think also the agency should put more information up on the open data platform. That would help a lot. So, I hope you will sign on to Intro 1235. It is outrageous that sixteen percent of FOEL requests are still open after a year in this administration. I also want to say thank you to all who supported Mark Landis, who will be the Manhattan Rep. on the Board of Elections. I'm sure he'll do a great job. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Aviles, followed by Joseph, then De La Rosa.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I want to take a moment to bring your attention to an important resolution I'm introducing today, Rezo 839. This resolution is in support of state legislation that would establish a SNAP and cash assistance fraud victim compensation fund, an issue I'm sure you all deal with on a daily basis in your offices. In my district, residents have lost thousands of dollars of food, of, of resources they depend on for food. It is critical importance that we pass this here in New York State before the close of the budget season so that the appropriate allocations can be made to protect New York City families, who otherwise will literally go without food. For those of you who don't know, the Office of Temporary Disability reports that between August 2023 and December 2024, sixty-five million dollars in theft has occurred for SNAP benefits. For those of you who may not be aware, the federal program that reimbursed victims of SNAP fraud ended on December 2024, 2024, and I do not need to tell this group that with the Trump Administration, no hope is coming for victims of SNAP fraud. While a federal government of, of simply adding security chips, excuse me, while the federal government's fix of simply adding security chips to the card would bring enormous relief to the system, New York State must step up as the federal enaction that would protect working families is unlikely. Please sign on to this resolution and urge your state colleagues to pass A03578 and S00403. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Joseph, followed by De La Rosa, then Caban.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'm proud to introduce Bill Intro 1240 alongside my councilmember colleague, Councilmember Lewis. This bill requires the mayor, Mark J., to establish a holistic needs assessment program with consent. This assessment would offer to people in custody of Department of DOC following a Supreme Court arraignment. The assessment would identify mental, physical, health needs, substance abuse, intellectual disabilities, history of domestic violence or trauma, emotional regulation challenges, or other sociological condition at the time of arrest. The result would be shared with the person, criminal justice person, for fourteen days. Mark would not be allowed to share any confidential information. It would be required to publish a report twice a year, on July 1st and July, January 1st and July 1st, by race, age, gender, relevant health information. The report must be submitted to the Speaker of the Council and the mayor. And we're looking to make this a holistic approach based on the public's March 2025 report for safely reduced jail population. Today, I'm also introducing a Rezo recognizing the month of March annually as Music in Our Schools Month in the City of New York. Resolution 842 is initiative to highlight the vital role that music education plays in our academic, social, and emotional development of our students. By celebrating this month, we affirm our commitment to ensuring that every child, regardless of zip code or background, has access to a high-quality music program in school. Music in our school month serve as a powerful reminder of the importance of equitable music education. It is an opportunity for educators to showcase their work, for students to share their talents, and for communities to celebrate the transformative power of music. Music fosters creativity, discipline, collaboration, and self-expression. Skills are essential for success in every walk of life. As we face growing challenge in public education funding, this resolution calls attention to the need to preserve and expand access, access to music and the arts in all of our public schools. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Recognizing Councilmember De La Rosa, followed by Caban, then Banks.
Thank you. We tout the diversity of this council because in every one of us, we carry the many cultures and people that form the melting pot of this city. This council has the most Dominican representatives ever, and today, we carry with us the deep pain of our people. For the past three days, the Dominican Republic has been in duelo or mourning due to the tragic roof collapse at the iconic Jessup nightclub in Santo Domingo. One could never expect that such a joyous occasion could turn into a nightmare that we are living today, a nightmare that we can now wake up from. The governor of my hometown, Monte Cristi, Nelson Cruz, who many people and politicals knew as the face that received them on delegation trips tragically passed away. In her final moments, she called the president of the Dominican Republic for help for the hundreds she knew needed it. That is the spirit of the Dominican people. As of today, there are a reported two hundred and twenty-one lives that have been lost, and so many more injured, making this one of the most devastating events in recent Dominican history. We can expect those numbers to unfortunately grow, as they have for the past few days. We lost merengue legend Rubi Perez, MLB greats like Octavio Doctel, people visiting from all over the world, and so many Dominicans who were known for their joy. We cannot be more grateful to those on the ground aiding in the rescue and recovering, saving lives and finding those underneath the rubble. We mourn for the families that will sit for dinner and holidays with an empty seat at the table. Al pueblo dominicano, nosotros los dominicanos de la diáspora, sentimos este dolor con ustedes. Nosotros también lloramos con ustedes. Y hoy le pedimos al Señor por ustedes. Please keep the Dominican Republic, the families of the victims, and the many souls we lost in your prayer. May those we lost be guided to glory, and those impacted find peace in this incredibly difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, for that message on our shared community. Recognizing Councilmember Caban, followed by Banks, then Vernikov.
Um, I just, I just want to take a, a quick moment to echo the outpouring of love and solidarity to my Dominican neighbors that are in a lot of pain right now. And appreciated your words, Councilmember De La Rosa. Today, I, along with several colleagues from the LGBTQIA+ Caucus, am introducing a resolution firmly opposing President Trump's executive order from January 29th attacking rights and protections for transgender students. The order is a direct assault on the rights of transgender and gender nonconforming students, which targets their ability to be recognized, respected, and supported within our schools. This resolution expresses the council's unequivocal opposition to President Trump's executive order restricting protections for transgender students and calls on the New York State Department of Education to ensure that all schools in New York City continue to uphold policies that protect the rights and dignity of transgender and gender nonconforming students regardless of federal directives. New York City has long prided itself on its commitment to inclusion, equality, and respect for all students, whatever their gender identity. Our schools must remain a place where every student feels respected and empowered to be their true self. I want to thank Elizabeth Arts from the Legislative Division for her work on this resolution, and I urge my colleagues to sign on. Please join me in standing up for our students and affirming that discrimination has no place in our schools. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Banks, followed by Vernikov, then Meili.
Thank you so much, Madam Majority Leader. I want to take a moment to speak about Principal Brown of PS 202, who has been, has been serving the school as assistant principal for the past two years, and was appointed interim acting principal this school year. Over the past several days, I had been heard from staff members, parents, and students alike, many whom have tearfully shared how Principal Brown has profoundly impacted their lives. Her leadership has been nothing short, short of transformative, and it's clear that she has earned the respect and admiration of the entire school community. Principal Brown is truly a jewel in our community, and she has worked tirelessly to bring stability, confidence, and hope to a school that not too long ago struggled with moral and leadership and continuity, lack of moral leadership and continuity. In just eight months, we've seen tangible improvements with her at the helm, and while there is still work to be done, progress has been made. However, it has come to my attention that the administration under Chancellor Ramos and Superintendent Collins
and Superintendent Collins is considering removing Principal Brown from her position at this crucial time, at the tail end of the school year. Imagine that, I ask. How much sense does that make to uproot and disrupt the lives of our children, especially after all the hard work and growth that has taken place under Principal Brown's leadership? Principal Brown is more than just a leader. She's a dedicated educator who has fostered a sense of community and stability for both staff and students. At a time when our schools need consistent leadership, I urge the chancellor and the superintendent Collins and administration to reconsider this decision. Our children, our educators, and our community deserves continual leadership of Principal Brown. Thank you much.
Recognizing Councilmember Vernokov, followed by Mealy, then Sanchez.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Last week, our community experienced the tragic loss of a young mother, Natasha Saada, and her two small daughters, Deborah and Diana. They were taken from us so needlessly by a reckless, deranged driver who should have never been on the road to begin with. My heart and prayers go out to the Saada family. May they be comforted among the mourners of Zion Baruch Dayan Ahmed. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Mealy, followed by Sanchez.
It is with a heavy heart that I call attention to the tragedy that occurred in my district. On the night of April eighth, there was a massive fire in the Beffer-Stuyvesant portion of my district, at five twenty MacDougal Street, that took the life of our beloved seventy-seven-year-old Cheryl Griffin. She was a valued member to our community and a staple, strong person in our community. I can remember her always saying that she was a member of the Unity Democratic Club, in which I'm a member of just as well, and that's where Shirley Chisholm announced that she was running for president. And she was a value, value community asset. And I just want to say to her family, once again, my deepest condolences to the family, friends of our district, and the Griffin family, and my prayers go out to Dominican Republic, all that was lost, and we have to make sure that we pray for the ones who are still here, that they can stay strong for the others, and I thank you for this. I thank you, and my condolences to all my Dominican colleagues. Thank you.
Lastly, I'd like to call on Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and thank you, colleagues. Speaker, thank you for acknowledging in your remarks what happened in the Dominican Republic, and I want to associate myself with Councilmember De La Rosa's comments. We're devastated by this horrific tragedy at Jet Set Club, two hundred and twenty-one precious lives lost too soon, and the only thing I want to add is that the New York City, right, is invited to a vigil that will be taking place in Councilmember De La Rosa's district this Friday at seven P.M. at Quixote Plaza, and if it rains, the vigil will be at Alianza Dominicana. So, may those lost find comfort in this time of sorrow. Thank you.
I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Before we conclude, I just want to recognize our members of Delta Sigma Theta who are here today. Oh, they're probably still taking pictures. They were here today. Wanted to recognize them and wish them a happy third annual Delta Day from the City Council. In addition to this, I wanted to take a moment also to wish our Jewish neighbors a peaceful and joyous Passover, which starts on Sunday evening at sundown. Also, wanted to bring to our colleagues' attention, I believe Councilmember Botcher has left, but there was a helicopter crash at Pier Forty in his district about an hour ago. We want to recognize that. We know that one person did perish, and we are praying for all the families of the victims of that crash this afternoon. So, with that, the meeting of April tenth, twenty twenty-five, is hereby adjourned.